Okay, you're live.
Okay, great. I'd like to open the Hood River City Council meeting for April 26, 2021. And first, I'm going to read the land acknowledgement and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. As we meet tonight, let us all remember that today, we are stewards of land that has come, that has been home to indigenous peoples for thousands of years before the recent arrival, arrival of European heritage dominated culture. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. Jonathan, do you have a flag voice? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, we have two people to speak for business from the audience and our first speaker is Megan Ramey, who is also on a planning commission, but I think she has a different hat on this evening. And then our second speaker will be Allison Fitz. So you want to promote Megan?
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, Megan.
Okay, great. Hi, y'all. I'm actually testifying from the Gorge White House. So if you hear some awesome kids screaming in the background, that's why. So my name is Megan Ramey of 1886 Belmont Drive, and I'm a parent of a fifth grader. I'm excited to share that since April 5th, Hood River has had our first bike train for May Street School. And I'd like to invite council to join us for May Bike Month. What is a bike train? Well, functioning like a school bus with routes, stops, and timetable, a bus train has two parent conductors, one at the front, which is the engine, and one at the rear, which is the caboose. Students can ride with or without their parents to the school to learn bicycle safety and safe routes. We depart from two locations, picking up students at noted stops. Following the end of school, students ride in their bike train to the stop nearest to their home. The bike train has already produced fond stories and memories. We carry the kids' heavy backpacks, coach them in bike handling skills, make pit stops at little libraries. We have gotten to know our fellow May Street parents, heard all about Pokemon and horses, and listened to music on the ride. Kinders ride the whole route and a few fourth and fifth graders have already graduated now knowing their safe route. Their parents are comfortable with their independence. The students get fresh air, outdoor, social time, and a normal routine in an otherwise COVID roller coaster world. Parents' time is freed from congested vehicle lines or to simply stay working. I've shared the map and photo and attached the bilingual brochure. We are updating the timetable after a month of operating and I can see it really growing when the weather is warmer. I would love if you guys all joined the myself and the 10 other rock star volunteers, parent volunteers as celebrity conductors and sharing the joy of Bike Month for next, for this upcoming May. Please reach out to me. I've included my email in my testimony. I want to give a special shout out to Principal Kelly Beard, who has entrusted me with organizing this bike train and to all the parent volunteers and the 30 kids who have been our passengers. It's been an awesome April. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Megan, for your leadership and volunteer time for doing this. I'll, I'm going to try and join you at least once. Thanks. Allison Fitz.
Hello.
Hi, Allison. We can hear you.
Hi, thank you.
We did get your written information today, so you have three minutes right now.
Okay. Well, hello, my name is Allison Fitz and thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I'm here to voice my concerns and those of my neighbors regarding the Inn at the Gorge and its application for a full on-premises liquor license. I apologize if my presentation is less than thorough because none of us in the neighborhood knew about this until this past Saturday. Specifically regarding the license, I have some concerns. OLCC requires that public notices be posted on the building. The local OLCC license investigator has said the public notice was sent to the applicant for posting, but as of today, I did not see any notice posted. The Inn does not meet, also the Inn does not meet requirements the OLCC has for a full on-premises license. Specifically, they do not quote, "cook and/or prepare five substantial food items in all areas where alcohol services is available," end quote. Other concerns I have that are just specific to the Inn. The Inn actually may be in violation of Section 56.50 of the Hood River County zoning ordinance. Quote, "A bedding breakfast shall be clearly incidental, accessory, and subordinate to residential use," end quote. Secondly, the number of guest rooms, as well as the number of guests allowed, exceed the number permitted in Section 56.5. Other questions I have regarding this license. How will the Inn address the need for increased parking likely to result from selling alcohol? Two, how will the increased foot traffic impact the already very dangerous intersection at 12th and Eugene? Next, how will they, how will providing live music or DJ impact the noise level in the neighborhood? And six, or lastly, excuse me, does the Inn have sufficient COVID-19 protocols in place to manage a live music venue? I've provided the council with copies of the pertinent OLCC requirements and Hood River County ordinances, as well as a map of the area, and screenshots of the Inn's available rooms and capacity. Some of the information from OLCC is not longer applicable, specifically the requirement to notify nearby churches, schools, et cetera. But I believe all the other information is current. We would, myself and my neighbors, would appreciate the council's further consideration of these issues before agreeing to a full on-premises liquor license. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Allison. We're going to be taking up that issue later in the meeting. Our first item is a presentation from Hannah Ladwig regarding the farmer's market.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Hannah.
Um, thank you for having me present to you today. I wanted to start with kind of an overview of Gorge Grown because I'm not sure that we've kind of gotten into that in the past. And so kind of talk a little bit about that and then more deeper into the farmer's market. And so first, I'm the farmer's market manager and I'm also the communications and outreach manager for Gorge Grown. Our mission is to build a resilient and inclusive food system that improves the health and well-being of our community. So most basically, we just try to increase the supply and demand of local food here in the gorge. So most folks know us for managing the farmer's markets, but we have a whole suite of programs that help us fulfill our mission, including our mobile farmer's market program, which will be kicking off this May and going to 10 communities throughout the gorge in all five counties. We have crap talks going this spring and summer, which are organized by and for farmers. They're farm tours and learning opportunities where farmers can go visit other local farms and learn from them, kind of this community of practice. We have our VegRx program. So we're currently, for example, working with Providence to provide local food to low-income oncology patients. While we also have a program that supplies produce for some of our BIPOC community members who are, need to quarantine due to the pandemic. We also organize the Gorge Food Security Coalition, which brings together all partners to help kind of fulfill this mission and make sure that local food is abundant and accessible to everyone here in the gorge. We convene the Rural Farmers Market Network, which brings together farmer's market managers from across the gorge to bolster food access programs like Snap Match and then work collaboratively and serving competition with each other. And we have a gorge cleaning program, which organizes gleams to go out to our local farms and orchards and even backyard gardens to pick excess food that might otherwise go to waste and donate to food banks, food pantries, and community meal sites. So just wanted to paint the picture that we're a lot more than farmer's markets. But with that, I'll talk a little bit more about the Hood River Farmer's Market. And first, really wanted to start with a big thanks. So we received a lot of support from the city in 2020. So first, the lot rental fee, we again put that into our Snap Match program, which became more important than ever due to rising needs from the pandemic, which I'll talk about in a second. In March of 2020, Governor Brown and the Oregon Department of Ag recognized farmer's markets as an essential service and they should have, should remain open during the pandemic. So I really want to be sure to extend my gratitude to Rachel Fuller and Mayor McBride and the city council members for allowing us to open a month early in early April last year. You know, in the height of this really scary new time that we were living in and as grocery stores were kind of going bare. But we were able to open and had one of our most successful seasons. So last year's successes would not have been possible without the city's support. So thank you so much. And then again, thank you for continuing to waive the lot fee for this coming season. With that savings, we will be able to increase our Snap Match program from a $10 match to a $15 match, which we piloted this past winter during our winter season and will continue now in the regular season. So our Snap Match program offers an incentive to folks using their federal benefits at the market. In 2020, we had about $9,300 in benefits used at the market, which was basically double of any other year that we've had the market. And we gave out about $4,000 in the incentive. So that was a huge increase as well. We had about 130 unique SNAP customers at the market and about 110 of them were new to SNAP or to the market. So because of the pandemic, so many more folks were eligible for SNAP. So much more support was there with pandemic EBT and that sort of thing, that we had a greater pool of customers coming to the market and using their benefits. We did some surveys. 100% of SNAP customers we surveyed said that the amount of fruits and vegetables that they were consuming increased as a result of the program. 100% of them said that the number of times they visited the market increased because of the Snap Match program. So I kind of use that as a metric for saying that the, this program really provides a more inclusive market space. Some of these folks probably would not have come to the market had they not had this program. And then we also had some really great experiences, personal experiences with some of our SNAP customers. You know, one memorable time was a, we had a senior who consistently came to the market and she told us it's the only time she went out that spring is just the one, once a week to go to the market and use her benefits. And you know, there was a new mother who came to the market right away in April and used her benefits and stocked up on a lot of, you know, really great, great quality meat and produce and was able to then just like hunker down during the kind of really intense scary time of the pandemic. But in addition to our Snap Match success, 2020 was our most successful season in many ways. So with the guidance of the Oregon Department of Agriculture, the Oregon Health Authority, and Oregon Farmers Market Association, we developed a pretty robust safety plan. And this plan has then served as a model for other markets across the Northwest. I've given trainings on it. For Oregon Farmers Market Association and Washington State Farmers Market Association for other markets to learn from our success. We know that from data that we collected at the market in early April. 60% of customers were coming from Hood River and 38% were coming from surrounding counties like Mosher and Lake Sandman and Parkdale. And we know that 83% of our local farmers and food producers lost restaurant accounts last year. So direct sales to customers became even more important. Oh, and I forgot to mention this, but 91% of customers we polled said that they felt more safe shopping at the farmer's market last year than they did a grocery store. And the, and then 9% said they felt the same. So nobody felt less safe shopping at the, at the market last year. So while our customer attendance was down by about 23%, the average customer was spending significantly more at the market to where our gross sales increased by 16% from the year before. Our vegetables grew by an amazing 50 and meat sales by almost 80%. So we're really looking to build on this success in 2021. Our market opens this Saturday. So I'm sorry, there's not a more robust presentation, but it's a busy time. And we'll be open every Saturday, nine to one, in the Columbia lot through November. I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, thank you so much for your support of the market and our local farmers and producers.
Thank you, Hannah. Does anyone have any questions? No questions, but thank you so much. I'm, I'm just so proud that we have done what we've done with, with, you know, you guys being able to use the lot. There was some trepidation when you guys started up last year and it has turned out so well and it's in every way to help people. So I'm really proud that we did that. I, I'm, you guys have been a great partner for the city. Thanks. And thanks for the very thorough report. I, I love it when you give us all those statistics that you guys have kept track of those things. That really helps show that we're, you know, we're doing this right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I do, I do have, have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Madison.
Hannah, thank you so much for, for your presentation and thank you for your leadership. Just out of curiosity, since Mercado del Valle didn't happen this last year, how did Gorge Grown help connect to the Latinx community to ensure that they too had access to fresh fruits and vegetables since Mercado del Valle was not open?
Yeah, yeah, good question. We did continue our mobile farmer's market stop there. So we stayed consistent with the Mercado times and dates with that stop, which was really awesome. We had the WIC department out to that market to supply. WIC provides produce checks for families who are eligible that they can spend on local produce from local farmer's markets and farm stands and our mobile market is registered to participate in that program. So that helps increase the access to. And then I mentioned this before, but our VegRx program also provided fresh produce to folks who needed to quarantine specifically for Black Indigenous people of color, folks in our community.
Thank you. The other question that I had is how are you guys partnering with transportation partners such as CAT to simply provide more routes to the main farmer's market here downtown in Hood River?
Yeah, great question. So CAT is going to be handing out free vouchers for folks to come to the market. So where they, you know, partnered with quite a few community partners to do that. We're one of them. I believe that program's going to kick off July 1st, but I believe they have funds that they can start a little or provide vouchers a little bit earlier. So hopefully we can get folks coming to the market even before then. But yeah, we are partnering, partnering with CAT.
Perfect. Thank you. I think once you have flyers, we'd love to be able to advertise that as well. So if you can send it over to our way, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks again, Hannah. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So that was our only presentation this evening. And then for the work session, we'll go ahead and open that work session. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. And so Jennifer Caden is going to give us a presentation on affordable housing strategies and project scope for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Pull up my presentation. Hopefully, maybe give me a head nod when you can see that. Okay. Well, I'm here tonight, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for having me to talk about a familiar issue, affordable housing. More specifically, on the 2021 work plan is the, a project to develop an affordable housing production strategy. And the purpose of my presentation and discussion tonight is to get your feedback on the project deliverables, the project outcomes, issues that will be considered, and to answer any questions you have about the project scope. An affordable housing production strategy is an action plan that will identify policies and actions the city can take to promote the development of affordable housing. It will include a prioritization of policy tools and financial incentive, incentives that can be implemented by the city to encourage affordable housing. It will articulate funding options and sources for that funding, for the incentives, and it will include an implementation plan to oper, operationalize the strategy. Just so we're all on the same page, I want to take a minute to talk about what I mean by affordable housing. For this project, we're defining affordable housing as housing that is for sale or rent and is affordable to those making up to 120% of median family income. For 2021, the median family income is estimated by HUD to be approximately 76,800, so higher than what you're seeing in this graph. And that translates to about 92,000 for 120% median family income. If I've done my math correctly, that roughly translates to affordable sales prices for homes in the range of 276,000 to 322,000 or monthly rent of up to $2,300. The project focuses on the range of up to 120% median family income because that is the type of housing that is not being produced by the private sector. The private market is not producing this housing. In addition, Echo Northwest has estimated that families in Hood River or individuals in Hood River need to be earning closer to 150% median family income in order to afford a home in Hood River. This is not a new issue in Hood River and I think it helps to put this project into perspective with recent actions taken by the city. So I'm just going to spend putting the project into context and looking back a few years. In 2015, the city completed a housing needs analysis that included some important takeaways. Looking ahead 20 years from 2015, it identified that there was a limited land supply in Hood River to meet the state mandated 20-year land housing supply or land supply to meet housing needs. And particularly, that was true for multifamily housing. The Hood River urban growth boundary and expansion of it is complicated by the fact that we are located within a national scenic area and surrounded by high-value farmland and of course, the Columbia River. So our, the urban growth boundary is constrained in Hood River. The housing needs analysis also identified a deficit looking out 20 years of housing units in general, housing supply, but particularly for affordable housing in multifamily housing. Looking at general housing supply, it estimated that we needed to produce approximately 2,000 new housing units over 20 years, which is about 100 units per year. And we were not keeping up with that. And unfortunately, we're still not keeping up with that production rate. Along with the housing needs analysis, a housing strategy was developed that was acknowledged by the city. It included three categories of recommended policies that were dubbed Strategies 1, 2, and 3. Strategy 1 looked at, or included policies that would increase the efficiency of land use within the urban growth boundary. In other words, policies that would help the city make the most of what we have in our urban growth boundary as far as land supply goes. Strategy 2 proposed regulating and managing short-term rentals. Strategy 3 included policies and ideas to develop affordable housing in market-rate multifamily housing. And we've identified, we've, excuse me, you've implemented a number of those recommended strategies, particularly in the first two categories and Strategies 1 and 2, and particularly to help increase the production of market-rate housing. Some of those actions that the city has taken in recent years include the development of a short-term rental licensing program, streamlining the approval, review and approval process for townhomes, creating incentives for new ADUs or accessory dwelling units, and the adoption of a middle housing code, which is on your agenda tonight. You've also taken, taken action on items that weren't necessarily in those documents, including adjusting the parking fee and lieu for residential units downtown and exempting the parking requirement altogether for housing in the upper stories of historic buildings. And we're starting to see the benefits of all of these actions. We've had three recent approvals for multifamily housing projects that are in various stages of permitting. We've had a leveling off in the number of short-term rentals in Hood River and we've seen an uptick in permits and inquiries for ADUs. Nevertheless, we continue to have affordability issues and the city's work is not done. Housing affordability is a complex issue that can't be resolved by any one action or overnight. It takes time. Some of the data that is indicating the issue remains is that the percentages, percentage of households that are cost burdened with respect to the cost of housing, housing has increased from 32 to 37% in recent years. And this is particularly acute for rental, for renters. Upwards of 48% of renters are cost burdened. We also continue to see an increase in home sales prices and rental, rental rates. In 2020, the median sales price for a home was close to $500,000. And the data tells us that this trend will continue. You saw this chart a couple of months ago from Echo Northwest that indicates that the trend could continue such that only about 10% of our current housing stock would be affordable to those making 100% of median family income by the year 2028. So just to sort of recap the takeaways of the snapshot of today in terms of afforded, housing affordability. We're not keeping pace with the producing the supply of housing that is needed to meet our growing population over the long term. Housing affordability continues to be an issue and is resulting in fewer percentage of Hood River's workforce being able to afford a house in Hood River. It's been estimated that only 23% of Hood River's workforce lives inside the city limits. We can expect this to continue if we don't take further action. And by we, I mean the community as a whole, not just the city council. I do want to acknowledge that there are people in the virtual in the virtual room who have spent years working on how affordable housing issues and that know much more about this topic than I do. And I also want to recognize that the city has taken some very significant actions recently, specifically with respect to affordable housing, including the adoption of a construction excise tax in 2017 that is dedicated to affordable housing needs and purchasing seven acres of land on Rand Road with the goal of developing affordable housing. So now the question is, what else can we do? And that's what this project is about. I view this project as building on what was the work that was done to develop Strategy 3 in 2015. And our timing is also good because the state recently required medium and large-size cities to, to produce housing production strategies in passing House Bill 2003 or 2003 in 2019. This is required for cities with populations greater than 10,000 people. So while we're not required to produce a housing or develop a housing production strategy, we can benefit from the work that's being done at the state. At the end of 2020, the state published some guidance to help cities develop affordable housing production strategies. And they came up with a detailed menu of potential actions cities could take, policies and actions, and divided them into seven categories. I've included a copy of this in your packet. And the, the, how I view this project is that it would focus on the actions and incentives that are identified primarily in categories C, D, E, and F. That includes incentives that, financial incentives such as funding off-site intersection improvements that might be required in association with an affordable housing development. Category D is financial resources. Examples of those include the construction excise tax, which you've already implemented. It also includes tax increment financing that is set aside for affordable housing in an urban renewal area. Category D includes tax exemptions such as property tax exemptions that are tied to a particular level of affordability. And category F includes land acquisition and partnership incentives and tools. These can include land banking, such as the recent purchase of land on Rand Road. It can also include partner partnerships with community land trusts and other ideas. The city's affordable housing production strategy would build on the work that was done, as I said, in 2015 for Strategy 3 and the work that's being done at the state to develop an action plan for Hood River, right sizing those ideas for what Hood River can do, and creating an action plan that prioritizes policies and actions to leverage not just the production of affordable housing, but probably also the preservation or conversion of housing units that have guaranteed long-term affordability. The project would also include an implementation plan that articulates how the strategy becomes a reality with a timeline for actions and identifying the resources to pay for them. What's not included in the project is policy tools for market-rate housing production or housing supply. The actual construction of affordable housing units is not part of this project. This project is also not intended to identify specific parcels of land for acquisition, and it's not intended to include zoning amendments. To do this, we're going to need a lot of community help and community input. One important component of the project is to create a task force that would be used to provide community input to the project and connect and a connection to the city council to assist you in in making decisions and adopting a plan. We envision that the task force would be comprised of local experts. It would be, include residents of affordable housing, employers who are recruiting workers to the area who have trouble finding housing, housing partners such as the Community Land Trust and Housing Authority and the community as a whole to ensure that everybody who is eligible for housing at this, at up to 120% median family income is represented and benefits from the plan. We also recommend that the council identify one counselor to serve as a liaison to the task force, to listen to the task force and to communicate back to council. And we envision hiring a consultant to help with this project, a housing, housing consultant. A successful housing production strategy can lead to some very important community outcomes, including the increased supply of housing at 120% median family income or below affordable to, to that price range, guaranteed long-term affordability when public investment is made in, in the housing, increasing the percentage of Hood River's workforce that lives in Hood River, reducing the percentage of cost-burden households, strengthening private-public partnerships to achieve housing goals, increasing the community understanding of the housing needs and increasing the community support and investment in housing, affordable housing in Hood River. Some of the next steps that we anticipate based on your feedback tonight will be to develop requests for proposals to hire a housing consultant to create the task force I discussed and then develop a public engagement plan, not only for the task force, but to engage the broader community and, and then kick off the task force and meetings later in the summer and fall. So with that, I would like to hear your feedback about the project deliverables, the project outcomes, the scope of the project, and any answer. I'd also happy to answer any questions you have for additional clarity about the project. Now, I can leave this up if you want to refer to anything. I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. That, that was a great presentation. I've just got one question on the task force. There was one for financial. A consultant or economist or something like that, economist, financial analyst. A lot of times, people that are doing that, you know, they kind of want to be paid, not just a volunteer person that might have expertise. So I'm not sure if the, if within the RFP, there might be some expertise when it comes to, to those kinds of things.
That's a good point, and not to put anybody on the spot, but I also think that the financial background and insight and specific information that our own finance director has will be really important on this task force. So I have talked to Will about serving on the task force, and he can help in that arena. But I do think we need to also identify, if possible, local, it could be a lender or, and it may also be some, even a developer that has the knowledge of what it takes to produce housing to help, I, help us identify incentives that will work in Hood River and what they will, what they will cost and how we will pay for them.
Okay, possibly another idea, I'm gonna, let's go to, as soon as I'm done, we're gonna do Tim and then Gladys. Is that there might be some information that we could glean from the Rand Road project from the consultant that had gotten a lot of different numbers for different things for that. I know it was specific to Rand Road, but I think in generalities, they might be able to give us some financial information from the stuff that they dug up on that, just an idea. Tim?
And I just want to say that I, I love input about sort of the hats that people might be wearing that are on this task force as, and making sure that we have covered our bases in terms of generally who's on the task force, but without specifically identifying individuals, I guess, for tonight's purposes.
Okay, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Just, just an idea, I'm not really sure whether it's a good idea or not, but maybe some thought given to you, reaching out to somebody down at Portland State University, their Urban Studies Program. Maybe they might be willing to provide some input or have a student that would be doctoral student or something like that that might be willing to provide some input. So that's just kind of a suggestion.
Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you for the presentation. I agree with the scope as far as really looking for housing options for those 120 below. I really enjoyed this idea of this task, task force. Along the lines that Kate was talking about, making sure that some sort of economist, financial expert is, is being paid for their time. Really, I think it's important that whomever community members or whatever community members are involved, that they too are being incentivized for their time as this is really important work, especially to help advise us on some of the, you know, what folks have to say. I think it's very valuable that we incentivize by, you know, a gift card or whatever it may be as a good use of their, we really value their time and appreciate their time to help advise us.
Thank you, Council Rivera. That's a good idea.
Jessica and then Megan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer. I also got a, had a chance to chat with Jennifer about some questions earlier today. I, so I guess just some comments on the, the scope overall. I do think, I appreciated you saying what the project includes and does not include, because I think that's important to outline. And I also really appreciate that it includes an implementation plan so that it's not just a document that sits on a shelf, but it has, as you said, a way to operationalize the strategy. I, one of the things that I was interested in seeing is consideration of how, what tools we could use to protect the affordable housing that we already have, in addition to how to encourage more. And one of the ones in particular that I'm interested in are the manufactured home parks and the, also the RV parks that are used for housing. Those are important pieces of our community and we've seen, for example, in White Salmon where they lost a manufactured home park to higher-end housing, and then the city adopted a, an ordinance to protect manufactured housing. I think that that's something I would like to consider for Hood River. And hopefully before we lose any of what is, exists now. And then the other tool I am interested in, and we did get a comment on this, but I was already thinking about it, is somehow using urban renewal for the, the west side of the community where the cost of infrastructure is becoming a barrier to development. Jennifer chatted about how, you know, considering what pieces of the urban renewal are specifically targeted for affordable housing versus any kind of development, but which is a good idea. So anyway, those are two things I'm interested in is a tool of urban renewal consideration and then protecting the housing we have, such as manufactured home parks. Thank you.
Jessica, I just wanted to ask a question about what you might be talking about with urban renewal. So you were saying potentially having an urban renewal district for the west side of town that could be used for infrastructure that would subsidize what maybe developers had to put in in order to incentivize affordable housing, so there be some kind of a a bar they would have to jump. You know, 20% of the units they put in have to be affordable and have to stay affordable or, you know, something like that. Is, is that what you were talking about?
I mean, I don't, I'm not really clear on the details. I was thinking the, the committee could help get into that. I was just thinking about how it'd be helpful to have an urban renewal zone over there in general, but especially tied to this policy. How do we? Yeah, how do we use it where maybe the, some more of the benefit goes to developers that are making permanently affordable housing? I'm not sure how, how that works, but that's the general idea.
Okay, for discussion. Okay, great. Thanks. Megan?
Yeah, I think I kind of have two questions. One, thank, thank you, Jennifer. Unsurprisingly, I'm super excited about this project. I think it'll be really good. In general, the scope sounds great. Obviously, there is huge need for 120 and below. None of that's been marketed. I am kind of wondering if, and I don't know the answer to this, but is there, would, would there be extra and additional things that need to be done for, you know, 80% and below folks? And, and does that need, you know, some sort of extra attention or special call out in the formation of this project? Or is that something that gets figured out as we go through the plan? And it doesn't need to be stated at this time?
I think that that generally is a question for the council as far as the project scope is concerned. I think when we get into this specifics of incentives, there may be some incentives that are more appropriate for different price points. But it, as far as the general scope, at this point, it is intended to serve housing up to 120%. If that level needs to be reexamined, that's a question for the council.
Okay, yeah, and I, I don't want to, I mean, I think we do need to go up to 120. I guess I just, you know, if, if there would be other special and additional things needed for, you know, our extra low-income folks that are struggling anymore, I don't want that to get, you know, completely subsumed by the things, but it doesn't mean I want to ignore the 80 to 120 either. So I think basically I will just bring this up as we go through the process maybe, and it doesn't need to change anything now. And then completely changing direction. So with the task force, can you just, is the task force specific to the development of these strategies and the implementation plan, or would it exist beyond this, you know, one-year process?
At this point in time, it's, it's to develop this strategy or plan. And I don't think I can answer that question.
Okay.
That hypothetical question beyond the scope of producing and, and a plan that's adopted by the council.
Okay, I mean, the, the current stated, you know, work of this task force is to develop the plan. How would, how do you see the task force interacting with the consultant during this process?
I anticipate a series of meetings that the consultant would be present with the task force.
Okay, I, I guess, and I don't know if I'm gonna ask this right, but like, is the task force coming up with mostly ideas and doing a lot of the, the legwork? Or is that the consultant or it's shared or?
I think to some extent, those are details to be determined. What I'm generally envisioning is that we take the work that was done in Strategy 3 in 2015, and we take the work that the state has published, and we start looking at which of those strategies are, have potential in Hood River, and we use tools like, we use different ways to look at what tools might have we use different ways to look at what tools might have the highest impact in the, and relative to the cost to start identifying, prioritizing potential incentives and which ones are more realistic than others potentially.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could, Counselor, I would add, the purpose of a task force is really to assist council in the policymaking. A lot of the actual work will be done with staff and technical experts. And so we're not asking, you know, community members to, to do that work. That would, you know, that would be, those are, that's a level of expertise that, that some may have, but we're not asking them to do that in this, in this task force.
Okay, great. Thank you. I, yeah, I'm realizing even just that the task force, I'm like, oh, that's new. So thank you.
I would think it would probably be something like what we did with the parking committee or parking task force. We had an expert that knew a lot about it, but they had to get specifics about Hood River and they worked with the staff and then brought information to the task force, and then we chewed through every single piece of that and, you know, distilled it into what, what would work here, but we were kind of led by the, by the person, you know, the consultant that had a lot of expertise in that area to start with. I would imagine it'd be something similar. Gladys?
Two things I would definitely advocate to have a community member.
Oh, Gladys.
Whether they're being impacted in housing. Can you guys hear me?
You're, you froze up. You froze up partway through what you just said. So if you could say that again, your screen froze.
Can you guys hear me now? Yeah, okay. I would definitely advocate for a community member to be a part of this task force, to simply give their input on their experience with housing in general. I think that's really important to have, even though they may not have the expertise of knowing all the building codes and, you know, everything that's available. That really gives us a, a position as a city that we've been talking about how we can communicate with our community members. I think this is a great opportunity. Something else that I, just because I listened to the Board of Commissioners meeting earlier today, I think it's important that we're also adding them as another governing body that we're making decisions with, are really collaborating. There are opportunities for us to pool our money, especially with the, the CARES funds that are coming in right now, and I think that's something that we could both, again, pool our resources to really make an impact to infrastructure and, or for housing.
Thank you.
Mark?
Thanks a lot, Jennifer. This is great. For the, I, I would recommend that the committee both include not just an observer city manager, city counselor, but, but a participant city counselor that would feed stuff back to us. I, I wouldn't be the first choice maybe, but, but I think that that's important to come back to us. We've seen where there's active city counselor participation in these committees. I think it's more, it's a stronger feedback. I'm, I'm looking at parking and parks as good examples and, and other ones, maybe not quite as good examples. I, I would also recommend that the, the, the committee be focused on the, the strategy, and then if there's a recommendation to have a longer term advisory committee slash task force, that that would be okay, but that there were not appointing, you know, this is a outside group that, that ends up having, you know, unknown. That, you know, the, the example is the Energy Committee that doesn't really connect to the council quite as well as I would hope it does. So we want to not do that. So if you, if you have a endpoint which includes a recommendation to generate a task force, that's fine. But, but appointing people now and then they just continue on to own housing forever would not be my recommendation. And then, you know, I think that your group of, you know, the, the color circle here is, is awesome. I think that that's good. And then lastly, I, I would question why we wouldn't include reduce regulatory impediments as part of what they're looking at. If all the data comes back and says, these are just killing us, why, or this rule is killing us, why would that not be on the table, I guess?
There may be some of those strategies that are in, within the scope of the project. The reason why I didn't highlight those first two categories is because we have taken other efforts to look at ways to reduce regulatory imped, impediments and make changes to the zoning code. So and not necessarily ruling those out, but I, we've had some significant efforts in those areas already.
Yep, yeah, and it's, and it's all.
And ongoing efforts, I should say, with, with streamlining permitting processes and.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think the other thing that was specifically stated that was not going to be included is identification of land for acquisition. And I just want to personally say that I think that we're always trying to identify land for acquisition. If we have enough money, it's not going to be the job of this task force to find land or to buy land. But I think just on, just bigger picture, the city would be keeping their eye out for land that we can, land bank, period. But it doesn't have to be included in this, but since it was excluded, I just want to say, well, it's excluded from this, but it isn't excluded from what's on our mind.
Thank you. That's a more complete way of describing it. That this project is not evaluating different parcels of land for acquisition. It would be to identify that land acquisition is an important tool, for example.
Mark?
Um, just, just on that point real quick, if, if, if there's a possibility for a bond in November of '22, that puts a timeline on your, on the effort here to have that be a recommendation. So just keeping that in mind.
Thank you.
A discussion point. Thanks, Mark. Anything else? Um, I, I, from your timeline, Jennifer, you know, somebody from council, and then we would have to do the RFP or RFQ slash RFP, and then we would, after we get that done, start reaching out to people to be on the task force after that?
Those two things can happen simultaneously. We can be doing outreach, and I've done a little bit of outreach already. I don't know that the task force would be formalized until we have a consultant in place. It's a little chicken and egg. But I think that if you are comfortable to identify a counselor just or as a liaison, you can do that tonight. I did put a recommended motion in your cover sheet if you should choose to do that tonight.
Okay, and that's on page five of our packet. And so when it says, so people know what they're getting into here, kickoff and meetings, summer and fall. So does that mean we would assume meetings would be finished by winter? Or does it mean they would continue on after that? Do you have any idea?
I can't give you a definite answer on that. That is one area that needs more work is the specifics of the timeline. But I, I hope we could kick this off this summer and meetings would definitely continue into the fall.
Great. Pretty exciting. I, I'm just excited that we had, you know, we did the analysis in 2015, and we have ticked off a lot of things since that time, huge amount of things. And this is just, you know, one more of those things. It's another task, but we're, we're putting it on the table and here we go. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. Megan's got her hand up. Okay, go, Megan.
I guess I just figured I'd put it out there of I'd be interested in being the counselor.
Well, I like that idea. You have time, Megan? Okay.
A day on the summer, it's fine.
Okay. All right. Great. So there's a suggested motion on page five that we can insert Megan's name into, if someone would like to make a motion.
Actually, before we do that, I guess maybe clarity on Mark's question of what the counselor's role is, is observing and reporting or participating or a little bit of both or something else?
The staff recommendation is that you would be listening so that you understand that input that the task force is providing to what is produced as a recommendation for adoption, and that you'd be the liaison back to the full council for that.
Because it is a recommendation to council, and then when it comes to council, council will be discussing the recommendation at that point. So it's just explanation of what the task force came up with and why and how.
Yes, this will be council's plan, not, not the task force. As was explained a little earlier.
And I think to Mayor, having a counselor present really adds to the legitimacy of this, the importance of this. Hearing from the community in a formal process on an, on an issue of this importance to the community, there is, there is real value in, in having a counselor present. So really appreciate, appreciate your willingness to serve in this capacity. In addition to everything else that.
Again, I'm very excited. So, yay.
All right. Well, then I guess I move to appoint Counselor Saunders to serve as a liaison to the Housing Production Strategy Task Force.
I second that motion.
So Gladys has made a motion to appoint Megan Saunders to, as a liaison to the Housing Production Strategy Task Force, and Jessica has seconded that motion. Any more discussion? Jessica?
I was just gonna say I.
Gladys?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim? Eric?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Right, you're it, Megan. Great, thank you so much for volunteering. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. Good presentation. Right, let's see here, where are we? Okay, we're gonna adjourn the work session, and we're gonna open the regular council meeting. Any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, there are none.
Right. Um, so we have a consent agenda, but I think we have actually three separate things that need, we have some different things going on in all of those, actually. So I think, let's just separate those because of that. So let's just go with the council meeting minutes of March 29th first. Does anyone want to make a motion on those?
I will. I just wanted to thank Jennifer for correcting the, the point from last meeting. But I moved to approve the council minutes from March 29th, 2021.
I second that.
Okay, Megan's made a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from March 29th. Jessica had seconded those. All those in favor. Eric?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim? Gladys?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. All right, our second item is an OLCC permit application by in at the gorge. And we have the information in our packet, and we had one person that spoke regarding that application and has some concerns regarding that, and maybe either Rachel or Chief Holstein could kind of run us through issues or potential issues and what our role is in this permit process. That would maybe be a good start.
Great, Mayor. Thank you very much for the question. So in terms of process, the council recommends to OLCC, and then OLCC is the licensing and issuing agency. I'll ask Chief Holstein and Dustin, as you suggested, Mayor, to just simply go through some of the concerns that have been raised and give their perspective.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this request is for OLCC issuance. The use itself is, has been existing prior to the B and B ordinance that is enforced. So it's not a licensed B and B under our current ordinance. I think our, our speaker had raised some issues about non-compliance, and, and I believe she cited the county's bed and breakfast ordinance. The city also has the bed and breakfast ordinance, but we're not reviewing the use in this case. When it comes to these issues, we will, we will look at the use that's in place, look for active violations and any, I would consider it a radical anomaly. So we're not reviewing for parking compliance, and we're not permitting a new use. If we're to implement or interpret the zoning code, that would be something where we would be sending notice out. There would be some full disclosure. This request is not, is not in line with that. It's, it's a liquor license request to allow liquor to be provided to, to guests. It doesn't allow for a live event. It doesn't allow this to become something other than a bed and breakfast as established before. So it doesn't permit commercial events outside the scope of what is there now. It doesn't expand the use, the uses that are granted. It simply allows someone to provide, I believe the follow-up was beer and, beer and locally produced beer and wine to the guests. So that's just kind of the lens that we look at when, when we evaluate it. Again, it's not a land use request. It's not a use change and, and this is not a, a city approval process.
Chief, do you have anything to add?
Dustin pretty much summed it up, and when re-reviewing this application, it was specifically designed for a kind of a quaint setting of just those that were staying in the bed and breakfast. It was not promoted as this would be a venue where people would come and visit and partake to the music and alcohol. It was, as Dustin stated, it was a beer and mimosas for a mid-morning alcoholic beverage. So, and as Dustin stated, this is just a grant or deny by the city. We look at the different areas. I look at, personally look at the investigatory of the business itself and moral characteristics of the individual applying for this and, and reviewing both those, neither new, there was nothing there that would promote me to say this was a bad decision for OLCC to move on or the city to grant this.
Megan?
Yeah, I guess just a question for Chief Holstein. This was a few years ago, but the last time some issue came up, I, my recollection is more that the city is like, grant or deny is really a recommendation to OLCC. It's not actually a decision. Is that correct?
I will. I think this will be the best analogy for you guys. OLCC is like ODOT. We can give decisions, but ultimately they are this yays or nays.
Okay, and then, and within that, if the, if OLCC had issues with the, the, some sort of process or what was being applied for, that's for them to decide. It's not, we're not actually interpreting their code or anything.
Correct. They will look at ORS and OERs to determine if this meets or does not meet the requirements for the state.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. First, Dustin, what, what is the current zoning for this location? This is probably R1 or R2?
I believe it's R3.
R3. So it's not a, it's not a commercial zone?
No, this is a residential zone.
And the current allowed use is, is just, I think, as you were explaining, it's just limited to a bed and breakfast use. There, it's not a, it's not a, I don't know what you would call it, but it's not a restaurant or a bar or anything like that. There it's not a, it's not a, I don't know what you would call it, but it's not a restaurant or a bar or anything like that.
Correct. The the current use is established is a bed and breakfast that predates. Predates our regulations, so it wasn't reviewed under that. It may predate the zoning code depending on who you ask. Because of because of its historic nature. But it it's essentially a. A bed and breakfast by by virtue of its existing status. It's not a restaurant. It's not a. Hospitality industry outside of that. Bed and breakfast is defined as essentially. An accessory use to a single family dwelling.
And so in order for it to be used in that fashion, there would have to be some land use application subject to review. And a granted, right? There wouldn't, there wouldn't be a lawful way to get straight to a bar or restaurant use without going through procedures that haven't occurred here.
Correct. That would that would end up going through the change of use analysis. So that's where we would get involved and we would have. Local authority over how it's advertised. When I interpret the code and the provisions of parking. And surrounding impacts, those are things that we do advertise and have procedure over that essentially. Either is is a staff decision appealable up to city council, but there is a formalized pro- a land use formal. Process that is based in the local authority here.
And if it and, you know, I'm not suggesting this is even contemplated, but if it were to be used as a restaurant or a bar, that would be the subject of. Presumably some kind of enforcement reporting and enforcement inquiry by the city because it would not be in allowed use.
That's correct. That would. That would be a local land use violation, a use presumably or allegedly not permitted within the residential zone or not under some. Without some approval and that would be subject to local enforcement.
And the OLCC presumably has review procedures for citizens complaints and in the event any particular location is. Calling outside the lines. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tim?
Thanks, mayor. So Dustin. You said that this predates any any of our current. Regulations. So what regulations do apply to the bed and breakfast?
They would basically be. Are noise. Typical variations that would apply to any household. So if. One issue would be if they were to expand or try to physically expand the business, it may trigger some preexisting. Review, but by way of our bed and breakfast regulations, they haven't technically been applied. The use has its status as previously permitted and it's. It's allowed to operate in that. Preestablishment. Format because it predates the ordinance.
So does the preestablishment ordinance. Require that the bed and breakfast occur. Occur as a. As part of somebody's, the primary use is supposed to be, is supposed to be residence. And that's gonna be the kind of like secondary use that breakfast. Is that correct?
That is the way the ordinance is written now. If if in the past it had been previously and lawfully established without having that, it could. It could exist. It could continue its lawful existence. Didn't get into. The kind of forensic analysis of when when established or determining those sidebars.
So I guess this is a question from Rachel. So Rachel, you know, when we review these. These applications, I mean. Are we essentially setting policy about where we want? These types of establishments to occur. I mean, it is is it a consideration that. We're permitting this. And it is a change. I mean, they're applying for a liquor license, right? So it's not, it's not like status quo. They're actually asking for a change. To be licensed to serve alcohol. So is it a policy decision for us? To allow that liquor license to occur in residential neighborhood?
Counselor, we do not authorize liquor licenses. We are not the permitting agency. The city council has the authority to not recommend. OLCC, but OLCC may or may not take that recommendation into consideration.
You know, and I understand that, but my question really was, is this a policy consideration? For the council to accept or reject this. Given with the understanding that ultimately the decision lies with. The OLCC.
Counselor, if I understand you correctly, you're asking if this would set precedence for other. Is that what you're asking? Would this set precedence for other B and Bs?
I mean, that's certainly a consideration, but I'm just trying to make a distinction between. What we want to establish as a policy. Versus what we can, what authority that we have. So we can make a policy decision that we don't want this use to occur in a residential neighborhood and then OLCC. Can make whatever determination that they want to, right? But ultimately, it could be our policy decision that we don't. Want to have bed and breakfasts establishes established. That have liquor licenses in a residential neighborhood. Right?
Counselor, where bed and breakfasts are allowed is a is a policy decision, right? That would be in in the zoning code. When it comes to liquor. That would be a different different set of regulations. So I think the, you know, and and this is a confusing one, right? I mean, there's a lot of overlapping policies here. There are policy problems that the city council could try to address here. We'd wanna understand what those are. There are also a number of complaints that I think could be, you know, could potentially be made that we would address. Through a complaint. Procedure as, you know, the chief and Dustin have outlined, but but the the specific question. Today is is more mechanical. It it's more mechanical in terms of yes or no with regards to the liquor license. Knowing that we will not be the ultimate authority. Did I get that? You know, correct me if I'm if I'm off track here, but.
No, but I think you're right that the the decision, we can say no. Right? And we can say no, and the reason why we can say no, one of the rationale is that we don't want. To approve the liquor license for a bread and breakfast in a residential neighborhood. That could be a justification. I have a follow up question for Chief Holstein, I guess. Or maybe Dustin, I'm not really sure who it's for. So on the OLCC application, they have. They have entertainment and it says check all that apply. And so that on there they have live music. And DJ music. So they're not actually applying for. That's not part of what they're applying for. Right, they're just saying that that's some of the uses that occur there. And that they they can do that one way or the other. That's permitted just as long as they stay within the noise regulations, right?
I'm waiting in line. Neil, I I can handle the use part if. That's why I specifically mentioned they they can check those boxes on there, but this does not permit a live music venue or change of use from the status quo. Regardless of what they put there, it may caution a caveat on your recommendation. That to something of this is a bed and breakfast and that is the use that is permitted. Under his previously established condition, this does not sanction or allow a change of use or live music event. I think that's. That's the way I would look at it. And that's why I made that statement before.
Could I ask for just one more quick question, Eric, before before you go? So. This particular case aside, we we and somebody else decides they want to establish. A bed and breakfast. So what we're discussing here still applies to them with the exception of that they're dealing with. The current regulations, right? So they can, they could apply for an OLCC license. No matter where their bed and breakfast. Is. I guess that's for you, Dustin.
Yeah, regardless of where the bed and breakfast is, that. They can, they can request for a license. We have people who request for licenses out of their home for other home occupations. So I mean, that's a. That there's all sorts of scenarios. The underlying zoning doesn't necessarily. Preempt them asking for a liquor license. We usually try to dig into find out why, what what is triggering this request? Do you brew beer at home or are you looking to start a bar out of your garage? There are two very different things from. You know, that may trigger an OLCC request.
Thank you.
So when you. When you say that, Dustin, and then I'll go Eric next. You need an OLCC permit if you're selling alcohol, brewing alcohol. Or giving it away. All three of those scenarios, you need an OLCC permit for regardless of where you are. Is that correct? Or maybe the chief could answer that.
My understanding is monetary gain. If you've got a financial gain from what you're producing, you're required to have a license.
So that would mean if they served a bottle of wine with the dinner that they're serving to these people. And didn't charge extra for that, they wouldn't need an OLCC. Card, it's it's a permit only because they would be selling alcohol to their guests that they would need this. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So I had a follow up question that I think is striking a similar chord to what Tim was asking. I might phrase the question slightly differently. Which is really what is the yardstick by which the city council is to. Bless or or reject one of these applications. I mean, for example, I assume the OLCC, when they get one of these applications. There's a bathroom within X number of feet of the bar. The applicant doesn't have a violent criminal history. There's probably things like, you know, other sort of very black and white things, but that's not our test as far as I'm aware. I'm just what, by what do we judge an application generally as a council? Is it a raw political decision, for example?
I'll take a stab at that one because I think it's a very good question. The city reviews it. And then the city council can look at that review, the staff review. And and make a decision to recommend or deny. At this point, the city staff has not, you know, on our very cursory review. Again, we've said sort of what it is not, have not found a reason to deny it. The city council could use another rationale as has been talked about to recommend or deny. But but my understanding is that, you know, we we do our review and then it's placed on your agenda.
Mark?
Thanks. Um, I I don't, a couple of real quick questions. I don't see where it says guests only in here. On the pages we have, is it, am I just not seeing it?
I didn't see that.
I believe we requested some, the applicant provide some follow up information to us. It that they did not include in their OLCC application.
And is it a valid enforcement situation if it goes beyond guests only? If if all of a sudden there's four cars parked on, trying to park on Eugene or on twelfth just below Eugene, is that is that an enforcement? Situation?
If we if we had a bar established in a residential zone for open. And that is a change of character and change of use that would result in a land use violation. So regardless of whether they had an OLCC license or not.
Right.
It would just be a different violation, but.
And it would, the the difference between just a party and this is that they're actually selling the drinks at that point.
Well, I think in terms of compensation too, I believe, you know, this is a for profit establishment. Providing alcohol to customers. Whether they pay for it by the bottle or pay for it by the room is also part of that compensation that we deal with, even with short term rentals. But whether they sold alcohol or people showed up and picked up alcohol for free, if we, we would probably consider that a violation in change of use. Whether they paid for it or not.
Then. Do we have other liquor licenses like this in residential zones? I I know we're we're fairly relaxed about liquor licenses, but is. This feels a little bit precedency to me, but I'm I'm not sure if I'm being. Accurate in that feeling.
Dustin, do you know if we have other B and Bs or liquor licenses in residential zones?
I did not investigate our B and B liquor stats before this. Whether it's nine oh two, I did do a land use history status that went back about twenty years, but I didn't see if they had liquor involved.
Well, not just on this side. I'm just saying, is this, is this breaking a a new? Is it a new hurdle that allows a liquor license within residential zones?
Yeah, I I can't, I can't say that. I didn't, I didn't do the the residential.
Okay.
I I have pulled, I have pulled one off the or. I have pulled a different residential one off for for a similar reason, so I can't say this is the first one.
Gotcha. All right, so there's a few things about this one that that feel a little different to me and and. So my eyebrows raised, but thanks for the answers.
Any additional questions? Okay, so we don't have any more questions about the application. So do people want to give their yay or nay at this point on whether they feel this is comfortable with? With a recommendation. OLCC will do what they do. Regardless of what we recommend. They will go one way or the other, but we can recommend whichever way we we feel on this. So. Are people ready for that? Okay, I think I see mostly head to nodding yes, so. I'm just gonna go around and see what people think on this. You can say yes or no for approval. Megan?
Yeah, I guess, you know, based on what staff said of the expected use and what basically wouldn't be allowed without a change of use or other land use violation. I I'm comfortable with staff recommendation.
Mark?
I I do trust staff to track it, but I I'm worried about the precedent of the residential stuff, so I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Tim?
Thanks. I think that the way the whole package is put together. Makes me uncomfortable. And I too am concerned about the. About establishing this type of. Policy in residential neighborhoods, I'm gonna say no.
Eric?
I I'm right on the line on this one. And I I do take some comfort in some enforcement mechanisms existing whereby any aggrieved neighbor could follow. I think I'm feeling like I don't have enough facts and information to be a fair jurist over this application. And so. Based on that, I'm not getting to yes. So I think I'm a no, but not because I'm not necessarily comfortable with it. I think I just feel like I don't have enough information about these concerns that have been voiced. I haven't heard back the, for example, the applicant hasn't had an opportunity to respond. And that doesn't seem fair to me, so but rather than rather than get to yes, I think I'm a no for one of more process. And if I could, my computers are about ready to die, so I'm gonna go off screen and find a plugin, so bear with me.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Jessica?
I am comfortable with what staff said and. I I'm, you know, it's a an existing use. Having alcohol for the guests, you know, honestly, the guests probably all bringing their own alcohol. So I'm actually, I'm not concerned about it and I I do think they might have problems anyway with OLCC because I think you have to have food at the same time. Is the alcohol. So I think if if for our part, I'm fine with this, so I'm gonna say yes.
Gladys?
I'm gonna say no for very similar reasons that Counselor Haney had. I feel like there's, I don't have all the information to say yes or no. Um, but I do recall a meeting from our prevention department and based off the information I recall off that meeting, I'm gonna go ahead and say no.
Okay. Um, and, um, I'm gonna say no. Um, I, I just, it feels like red flags on this application. To me, um, it feels like there may be some changes and which wouldn't be allowed and the food and the music, um, are different than would have been done before. So I, I don't feel comfortable with it because of that. But OLCC will do what they may. Um, so we've got two yeses and five, five, uh, recommendations on no. So, um, we won't be recommending that, um, but we'll see, see permit application approval, but OLCC will do what they may. Right, um, letter of support for House Bill thirty-two twenty-one, green tariffs. Energy Council, Megan?
Uh, just before we start this conversation, I, I just wanna clarify, I have a potential conflict of interest, but not an actual conflict of interest uh, based on my employer who would be one of the local service districts that could, uh, operate under this. Um, and also we operate two small hydro power plants that could come into play.
Okay. Rachel, did you want me to just, I, you know, the information's in the packet for people here. Um, and it is on the consent agenda. Um, but I, I think that what this is about, you do want me to talk about it, Rachel, or did you wanna?
Uh, Mayor, that's completely up to you. It was, it was on the consent agenda, but, um, you're on the energy council, so I'll leave that to your discretion.
Sure, um, I think it was, it was explanatory in the packet way better than what I could ever possibly explain about what this is about. And it's, you know, this, even if this gets approved, it's a completely voluntary, uh, thing to do in the long run. It just gives more options, um, for, for being able to purchase energy from different sources that might be more, um, friendly. That's why they call it green. More ecological and, um, using this, um, greenhouse gas, producing less greenhouse gas. So, um, that's what this bill's about. And so this would just be a letter to, to go in saying, we think that we should be able to, to be allowed to choose at some point in the future. And it just, it moves forward our, um, energy council goals and our Hood River County Energy Plan goals, um, to give us more options. So, um, does anyone else have any questions? I'm not probably the very best person to ask a lot of detailed questions about this, but that's it in a nutshell. Mark?
Oh, oh, are you moving Gladys? You can go ahead. I was, that's what I was gonna do.
You were gonna ask a question.
Making a motion, so.
I moved to approve the letter of support for House Bill thirty-two twenty-one and authorize the mayor to sign the letter of behalf of the city.
I'll second it since I'm already unmuted.
Okay, Gladys has made a motion and Mark has seconded the motion, uh, for approval, uh, to sign the letters in support of House Bill thirty-two twenty-one. Um, any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, uh, Mark?
Yes.
Jessica?
Hi.
Eric?
Aye.
Tim? Gladys?
Hi.
And Megan? Did you wanna, yes, okay. And Chair votes aye. All right. Thank you. Um, executive recruitment services, uh, Rachel?
Mayor McRae, councilors, uh, thank you very.
This is a regular business item. We're out of consent agenda. Okay, go ahead.
Right. Uh, thanks, Mayor. Mayor McRae, councilors, thank you very much for taking time earlier today to, uh, listen to the presentations from two finalists to conduct the city manager recruitment. Um, I don't have anything to add, um, to the discussion. It's, it's your, your decision and we'll just turn it over you. What we're looking for is a motion for the city manager to approve a contract with one of these firms so that you can move forward on your recruitment.
Great. Um, so I'll just go through this in a nutshell like I did earlier today, but Eric and Mark and I, um, went through eight applications and, uh, Rachel was there too, to help us get through the process, but, um, the three of us went through the applications and we had eight of them and we kind of narrowed it down to, um, to three, but then we really narrowed it down to two and, um, those were the two that we interviewed. We really came to consensus that we felt that those were the top two firms, to help us get through the process. So, um, I don't know if we wanna take a straw poll on, on thoughts or how we wanna go through this. Mark, do you, do you have any suggestions? You've done this numerous times before.
I'll just take the opportunity to, to say thanks to both of the firms. Um, you know, I think that they both did a good job today. They would both do an excellent job, um, in finding us a candidate. So, um, I think for us, it's, it's a great position to be in that we have two good choices. So, um, the, you know, staff did the RFP and they did a great job getting a, a nice pool of candidate companies and, and I think these really were the, the cream of that crop. So, so, um, that's all I'll say.
Okay, um, I'm gonna just see a show of hands for if, if you're leaning one direction or another. We're not picking a firm here. Let's just have hands. If you're leaning in one, if you've kind of thought, oh, I really like this one better than another. Who, who has that in their head? Okay, looks like we've got four or five of us that, that may wanna lean a direction. We don't know if it's the same direction, but let, we need to get started on what direction we're gonna go, guys. So we're gonna have to get them out here. So let's just, let's just see where, where we are. Um, Tim?
Maybe, maybe I, then, I maybe, I didn't have a chance to ask questions earlier on this afternoon. But, um, as you guys were going through, Hugh, Mark, and Eric, we're going through the, the potential firms. Um, what, what about these firms set them apart from the rest of the firms?
Well, I think one of the things that set them apart was that they were, um, they were more local and they'd done a lot more work either in Oregon or Oregon, Washington or Pacific Northwest. So they kind of know the culture. They know the, um, the pool of people that might want to come to the Northwest. Um, the logistics for them and being able to provide the service felt better. Um, they had a big enough crew that they could get the job done versus not having enough crew to get the job done. Um, they mentioned, I'm just listing all the things on the top of my head. They, um, they both talked about diversity quite a bit in their application. You know, emphasized it when, you know, the upfront, um, and integrity. So th- those are the reasons I came up with, that I, that I saw that stood out in these applications. Mark and Eric, maybe you can add.
I would, those hit on, you know, they're also, uh, they're not tiny, but they're not the big giant. They have recruiters, you know, in Texas and Florida and, and, um, San Francisco and, you know, so, so they were to scale, I would say. In addition to what Kate said.
And I'll say, I agree with what the mayor and Mark said. And the only thing I would add on top of what's already been said is, uh, they both seem to have a specific experience, not only with this, with respect to executive recruitment, but in the specific space of a city, city manager. So it seemed to be very, um, specific to that in terms of prior experience. And they also had, both had different, uh, uh, they both had experience with us, the city of Hood River, having done recruitment in the past with one and with the, uh, the other, having helped with our annual, um, goal-setting conference a couple of years ago. So they know us was another plus in my view.
Thank you.
Additional questions or have any comments, Megan?
I guess I'm, you know, someone that I, I think they both would do a really good job and I'm, I'm very on the fence because like some of the pros of one or the cons of the other and the other way around. And so folks who have opinions between the two, I'd kinda love to hear, um, you know, who and why might help me get off the fence.
Okay, I'm gonna go first because nobody else is raising their hand. Um, so, um, I, I thought I liked Jensen, but the reason I like Jensen, um, is I like their, that they're methodical. They, they work the way I work so that was comfortable for me. They were, um, methodical about, um, their presentation and they were very explicit about, um, the procedure. And they talked a lot about the integrity for us and the integrity for the, the person we'd be picking, you know, all, all, all of the people they would be interviewing. Confidentiality and that kind of thing, which I thought was really important. Um, and you know, I, I would say for me, they kind of made it by a hair. So like Megan's like not sure which one. So that, you know, I think they were both good firms, both really good firms, but that, the style, um, and the communication, the way the communication came across for Jensen for me, um, spoke to me personally. So that, that's my take on it.
I'll go next because I had a, uh, same very, exactly what Kate said. What really spoke to me was just how thorough he was in explaining the entire process. And then he specifically said that he would talk to every counselor individually or that they would talk to every counselor individually. And that to me was just really important and also that they are very, you know, they're local and the gentleman that is really leading their diversity recruitment or diverse, uh, recruitment that they have is a local individual that does help advise for local agencies such as PSU and whatnot. So that really to me, it just spoke to me and I felt much more comfortable selecting the first group than the second group.
Jessica?
I don't really have anything to add on the, um, the reasons why. I think the mayor and Gladys said it, but, um, I, I was also leaning towards Jensen.
Mark?
Yeah, and, and you know, I'm in the, I'm on the same boat for the same reasons that, you know, I, I, we, we like Jensen the last time we did it and, you know, they were just a little green at that, that time around and, 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 um, you know, this is nothing against the other firm, but, but I, I too, um, would choose Jensen Associates as the, as the preferred choice.
Um, Eric or, yeah, Eric?
Sure, I was leaning toward Jensen. I think we'd be well-served by either, um, but Oregon Company, they just, I guess by virtue of that curry favor, uh, and they just know us better. They both know us, but the Jensen knows us by getting this really deep dive into our goals and that kind of is a backdraft that, uh, I think nudges, um, him a little bit, uh, Jensen a little bit further ahead.
Tim?
Yeah, you know, that was my impression after the, the presentations as well. I will say, you know, that when I scroll down to, uh, the, um, recent executive search experience listed on page, pages forty-three and forty-four, it's a pretty long list for, um, the competitor. So, you know, it, it, you know, it's just, uh, but from a presentation impression point of view, um, I would agree with, with everybody. But having said that, the other firm looks really well-qualified to do this. They've obviously have, have a lot of experience doing it.
The last thing that I wanna bring up about Jensen, I think Counselor Haney brought this up, is that they've all had, they've all been in like city management or in some level of public office management at some point and they have that experience. So that was another reason that I didn't list earlier.
Megan?
This makes it really if you've all agreed. So, so Mayor, you're happy to push me to that side of the fence. So, um, I'm happy to make a motion.
Sure.
So, okay. Um, I move to authorize the city manager to draft and sign a personal services agreement with Jensen. I don't know what their formal name was, uh, Jensen for Executive Search Services.
I second that.
All right, Megan has made a motion and Jessica's made a second, um, to authorize the city manager to draft and sign a personal services agreement with Jensen Strategies for Executive, uh, Search Services. Um, any additional discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Gladys?
Hi.
Tim?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye. Right. Um, I do see Eric Jensen on our participant list, so congratulations, Eric. Right, let's see if I can. Too many papers, guys. Sorry about that. Oh, are we on to, um, Jen?
Yes, Your Honor. Okay. Reading of twenty-sixty-one. So I'd entertain a motion for the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-sixty-one by title only.
I would move that we, I'm just gonna say yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Megan and a second by Gladys. Um, for the reading of ordinance twenty-sixty-one, missing middle housing for the second time by title only.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Counselor Cohnahan?
Aye.
Counselor Metta?
Aye.
Counselor Zan Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Haney?
Respectful nay.
Counselor Rivera?
Aye, yes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-sixty, and an ordinance amending Hood River Municipal Code Title seventeen, Chapter three, Land Use Zones and Chapter twenty-four, Middle Housing Development Standards.
Thank you, Jen. Ordinance, uh, twenty-sixty-two, Transportation System Plan.
Your Honor. Oh, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, are you gonna do that too, Jen?
Uh, yes, I am. And, um, the ordinance was not posted with seven days, so it's actually gonna be read in its entirety if it's approved by council.
Okay.
The alternative? Motion?
Counselor, it's, it's, um, a page and a half.
I was picturing the whole T S P.
It's like. I thought so.
Jen's comfortable reading.
Kevin's, uh, do it for me, so. Um, so I would entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty-sixty-two in its entirety.
So moved.
So we, we have a motion from Jessica. So we we have a motion from Jessica for the um, reading of ordinance twenty sixty-two. For the first time in its entirety. Do I have a second?
A second.
And who's who who said that? Eric, okay, Eric seconded it, okay.
Uh, Counselor Metta?
Hi.
Counselor Rivera?
Hi.
Counselor Haney?
Aye.
Counselor Saunders? Counselor Cohnahan?
Aye.
Counselor Zan Miller?
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Your honor, Kevin.
Thank you. Before the City Council for the City of Hood River, Oregon, Ordinance Number Two Thousand and Sixty-two. An ordinance amending the City of Hood River Comprehensive Plan, Goal Twelve, by adopting amendments to the Transportation System Plan and amending the Hood River Municipal Code Title Sixteen Subdivisions. The Hood River City Council finds as follows. Whereas the City Council updated the City of Hood River Transportation System Plan, or T S P, as a component of the Hood River Comprehensive Plan on October eleventh, two thousand and eleven pursuant to ordinance number two thousand and two. And whereas on December twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, the Westside Area Concept Plan Report and Integrated Transportation and Land Use Concept Plan for the West Side of Hood River, funded by Grant from Oregon's Transportation and Growth Management Program, was published. And whereas D K S Associates, a suitably qualified transportation engineering firm, prepared traffic impact analyses for the Westside Area Concept Plan Report during a public process, which included the formation of both the Technical Advisory Committee and a Project Advisory Committee that included representatives of the business and development communities and other interest groups and agencies. And whereas the City of Hood River Planning Commission held over twenty public hearings between March of two thousand and eighteen and August of two thousand and nineteen to review the Westside Area Concept Plan Report, accept public testimony and recommend refinements to the City Council. And whereas in September of two thousand and nineteen, City Council directed staff to implement amendments to the Transportation System Plan based on the Planning Commission's recommendations from the Westside Area Concept Plan Reports, Streets and Transit Framework and Pedestrian and Bicycle Framework. And whereas in July of two thousand and twenty, the city contracted with D K S Associates, a suitably qualified transportation engineering firm, to prepare amendments to the Transportation System Plan. And whereas the revised findings, T S P, draft amendments to the Hood River Comprehensive Plan and Municipal Code were presented to the Planning Commission during its regular and duly noticed public meetings. And whereas the Planning Commission held duly noticed public hearings on March first and March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And with the input received at these public hearings, recommended to the City Council for adoption amendments to the T S P and related amendments to the Hood River Comprehensive Plan and Municipal Code, including amendments to Goal Twelve, Transportation and subsequent code changes to Title Sixteen Subdivisions generally is recommended by staff. And whereas the City Council considered the T S P recommendations during a public hearing on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, and accepted public testimony, after which the Council deliberated and voted to approve the T S P amendments. Now therefore, based on the foregoing findings, the Hood River City Council ordains as follows. Section One, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Adoption of an Amended Transportation System Plan. The Hood River Comprehensive Plan is hereby amended amended by adoption of amendments to the Transportation System Plan, which is set forth in Exhibit A attached here too, and by this reference incorporated herein. Section Two, Municipal Code Amendment. The following title, chapter, and sections of the Hood River Municipal Code are hereby repealed and replaced as set forth in Exhibit B attached here too, and by this reference incorporated herein. Hood River Municipal Code Title Sixteen Subdivisions, Chapter Twelve, General Design and Improvement Standards, specifically. Table sixteen twelve dash A, Access Management Spacing Standards is repealed and replaced. And Section sixteen point twelve point zero six zero, Sub B six, Minimum Rights of Way and Street Sections, Diagrams and Figures sixteen dot twelve dash C, sixteen dot twelve dash D, sixteen dot twelve dash E, sixteen dot twelve dash F, and sixteen dot twelve dash G are repealed and replaced with diagrams depicted. Figure six C, Arterial Streets and Standards Diagram. Figure six D, Collector and Connector Streets Standard Diagram. Figure six E, Local Street Standards Diagram. Figure six F, Alley, Cul-de-sac and Industrial Street Standard Diagram. Figure six G, Private Street Diagram. Read for the first time this April twenty-sixth day of this twenty-sixth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Um. All right. We are done with that. Bike Month Proclamation. Timely for Megan to be on, Megan Ramey with the Bike Train Idea. I'm gonna go ahead and read this proclamation. Because May is gonna be upon us here shortly. May twenty twenty-one, Hood River Bike Month Proclamation. National Bike Month will occur in May of two thousand and twenty-one accompanied by National Bike to School Day on May fifth and the National Bike to Work Week, May seventeen through twenty-third. This year, the Mid-Columbia Economic Development District is harnessing the national bike momentum by partnering with the nonprofit Commute Options to launch the Hood River Walk and Roll Challenge, which will encourage residents to walk or bike to work during the month by offering prizes from local businesses for logging active transportation commute modes on the Oregon Department of Transportation's, quote, "Get their Oregon platform." The Walk and Roll Challenge encourages people to get out of single occupancy vehicles and find alternative healthy ways to commute to work, such as biking and walking. The program is free, open to all people who live or work in Hood River County, and participation is voluntary. Other locally sponsored activities include local nonprofit Thrive Thrives Bikes for Kids Project, which will donate twelve bikes, locks, and helmets to Hood River's K through twelve students who want to bike to school. The May Street Elementary School Parent Led Bike Train occurring every Friday through June fifteenth. The Parent Led Renes Dell Salissimo, and I know I didn't say that right, sorry. Student Bike Club and special event sponsored by another local nonprofit, Anson's Bike Buddies. The City of Hood River's twenty twenty-one Work Plan Goals include, quote, "Efficient and Safe Transportation System for walkers, bikers, transit riders, and drivers." With a project focused on a safe routes to school planning project funded by ODOT. The Hood River City Council also adopts the twenty nineteen Hood River County Energy Plan that encourages local projects to shift behavior to low or net zero modes of transportation to reduce fossil fuel impacts of travel. The Hood River Bike Month local activities help further these goals by encouraging Hood River residents to discover healthy, green travel options to get to work, school, and play. As evidenced by our signature below, the Hood River City Council proclaims that May of two thousand and twenty-one is Hood River Bike Month and encourages participation of residents in local bike month activities as appropriate. The Hood River City Council has also agrees to participate with the Mid-Columbia Economic Development District Commute Options and Transportation Options Department of ODOT to promote this month of May two thousand and twenty-one as Hood River Bike Month, adopted this the twenty-sixth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one. Can we get something about the Bike Month on the website? Rachel?
Uh, sure, Mayor. We will. We usually get some collateral from other agencies and we'll post post those on our various communication channels.
Okay, great. Great, thanks. Um, council call. I I have three things. Um, update from the Bi-State Working Group on Bridge Replacement. The the last round of five million dollars that we got that went actually to Clickattack County because the money came from the Washington Legislature. That we're gonna be using that and we hope to get to thirty percent drawings for the bridge by the end of next year. So that's kind of a goal. We have, you know, some more money. We're gonna be trying to wrangle in from all different, the feds, the states. And, you know, there's a lot of money floating around right now. Don't know if our project's gonna rise up high enough, but we're gonna, we're gonna attempt to to get some more money. But the end of next year, we'll kind of be at a point where we will need to figure out the financing, so to speak. So are these uh, bigger pots of money, a hundred million here, a hundred and fifty million there, gonna be coming our way from states or fed? Or do we need to get more serious, so to speak? Regarding private public partnership. So, you know, we're still investigating that. And, you know, some decision will have to be made by the end of next year. So it's not imminent, but when we get to that point, that will have to happen. So that's just an update on what's going on with that. I was interviewed by Columbia Gorge News and that might be in this week's paper, maybe next week's paper, but they were talking, asking about housing, affordable housing, missing middle housing, infrastructure. And they also interviewed the mayor of White Salmon on the same subject. So tried to represent us well on on what we're doing on that. And the homeless working group got together last week again that I brought together, seems like, I don't know how long ago now, over a year ago. And I, what we're working on right now is kind of trying to make a bigger uh, coalition. So there's numerous different coalitions right now that are doing things in different groups. Mid-Columbia Community Action Council, the City of the Dells, Wasco County's doing some things, Clickattack County's doing some things. And we feel like if we can become one voice regarding uh, the homeless in this area, that we're gonna have a lot uh, better way to get funds, basically. And we can pool our ideas together. So we're we're gonna kind of work on bringing that all together. So that's kind of our next step for for that. Um, that's all I've got today. Who wants to go next? Oh, how about Jessica?
Thank you, Mayor. I will just invite folks to attend again. Our we're starting the process to update. This is not council related, but 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 anyway, the region's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So had a meeting in March to look at COVID nineteen impacts and talk about resiliency. Wednesday, we'll be looking at economic and demographic changes in the region and talk about is are the changes, you know, what we're hoping to see or how, what do we, what would we hope to see? Um, and they'll have monthly meetings looking at the vision for the region, the goals, and then strategies for how we're gonna get there. So I can send the link again. Well, actually, I don't know. I'll send the link to to folks if you're interested in signing up for the meetings there. There'll be Wednesday mornings once a month. So, but that's all for me. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Mark?
I don't have anything at all, Kate.
Okay. Gladys?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Okay, Megan?
Um, I just briefly, I mean, as you're all aware, case numbers for COVID have been going back up and we've moved to the moderate category. So I guess, you know, this is very repetitive, but putting the plea out to the community to, you know, continue to social distance and mask and take precautions. And if you have the opportunity to get a vaccine, to please take it. But I'm hoping we can improve things as the summer moves forward.
Uh, Tim?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Eric?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. If I could just spend a brief moment, since we didn't have discussion around the middle housing code. I was counsel sole nay vote on that plan. And it is a bit of a lonely place to occupy. I, if I could just briefly explain my vote. I I do wish this well. And I do hope we can all look back and remember the day that I was wrong about this. But I couldn't get to yes really for four reasons. First, my personal preference would have been a more graduated approach. Not to have a blanket approach across the city. I think there are lots of areas in the city where the infrastructure can handle this. I'm not sure, however, that the infrastructure is there to support this everywhere. I think of streets like Columbia, I think of streets like State Street, I think of streets like the Hazel area that's very narrow. I'm just not sure the whole town can absorb what could be coming, what may not be coming, but what could be coming as a result of the code change. So would have liked to have thought about it more on a graduated basis. Second, I was thirsty for more public involvement. I think that, you know, in reviewing the two hundred and fifty-plus pages we received, there were a lot of great ideas and I just, it felt like the plan arrived to council fully baked. And I think we could have spent a little more time considering those ideas. Ideas like an overlay zone to perhaps create exclusions like Portland's Z Zone, which that deals with geography, but this concept is there to have an overlay zone to perhaps exclude areas where there's not the absorption capacity. Consideration for historic homes, those are potentially at risk. Some of our historic neighborhoods may not be able to absorb this and it could impact the historic value. Other ideas, I heard I saw ideas about deed restriction concepts in there, which are kind of a different creature. But then the parking issues that we're familiar with, there was an idea in there to tie the the rollout of this to the T S P amendments, which I thought was a neat idea. I felt like we didn't really have the chance to dig into those and consider those. And then I guess the the last reason that I had voted no was I felt like really that it gave a false hope. Because to me, this plan wasn't built on the idea of creating more affordable affordable housing. It wasn't designed around that concept. But it was sort of sold on that concept. And I'm just not sure, I'm not sure the market is going to deliver the results that it was sold on. We may, we may have in eating up a lot of our precious inventory with more second homes. We may one day look back and view this as a period with great land inventory that we didn't put into deed restricted categories or other things. So and I know there's, you know, based on the report we had earlier today, this certainly isn't the end and it's it is merely, it's not the beginning either, we're midway or something, but it was difficult for me because I I don't like being alone and I respect everyone's views, but I just personally couldn't get to yes. But I'm wishing the best for the ordinance.
Thank you, Eric. All right, um, that's it for this evening. We have another meeting Wednesday this week at six o'clock, our first budget meeting. So we will see you back here on Zoom on Wednesday at six o'clock. And yeah, thank you. I will be in to sign those things tomorrow and pick up my packet. Thanks.